Are you or not wearing me?
Good afternoon and welcome to the Finance Committee meeting here at 39 Bank Street, Chatham, Virginia. This is Madam Clerk, would you call and roll please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Bowman?
Here.
Mr. Dudley?
Present.
Mr. Height?
Here.
Mr. Tucker?
Here.
Are there any items to be added to the agenda?
Ms. Chairman, I'd like to make it, add an item to the agenda, please. And that would be to have a presentation roughly three minutes from Beautification Committee, if you'll allow.
I'll second that.
It has been moved and met with second. Thank you, gentlemen, to allow the Beautification Committee three minutes' presentation. Any discussion? Cast your votes. Motion passes four zero. I'll ask for motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Sumut.
I'll second that, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman, Mr. Dudley, respectively. It has been moved and second to approve the agenda as amended. Any discussion? Hearing none, cast your votes, please. Motion carries four zero. Thank you so much. In the way of all business, that's five A FY26 budget calendar. Ms. Vanderheide, I'm looking for it, there she is.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Kim.
It's nice to be before you this afternoon with some information, additional information about our budget. Because of the way we have already set our rates, gives us a little bit more time to work on our budget. So the original budget calendar that you all approved back last fall needs to be amended so that it can appropriately show exactly where we're headed. I did print this out, so it's a little bit bigger for you. It is in my presentation. And we don't really need that on the screen, I don't think, but maybe they'll get that up. But just things that are moving on. So today is March the 18th, and we will be reviewing the budget calendar revisions along with projected revenues. That's also for FY25 year end, as well as the budgeted revenues for 2026. So between now and April 11th, we'll be working with members of the Finance Committee and with Mr. Shorter to bring that budget in balance with the revenues that we have. And he will actually submit a balanced budget to you all on April 11th for your review. He will make a presentation on April 15th. And at that board meeting, that is a regular board meeting for you all, you all will vote to advertise that budget for public hearing. It needs to advertise based on the new guidelines for advertisement. And so it will be advertised on April 23rd and April 30 with a public hearing. This is the only additional meeting you all would have. It's a special meeting of the Board of Supervisors on Tuesday, May the 13th. That is at 7:00 PM, and we'll have public hearing both on the school budget and the county budget. So you'll have two separate public hearings that evening. And then on the 20th, you have to wait seven days before you can actually approve that budget, and that is a regular board meeting night. So you all will have to come back for a special meeting to approve that budget. And so that way, we'll have that finalized just prior to the beginning of the fiscal year. Any questions on that, or any reason that you all see a problem with that, dates may need to change, or anything like that seem to line up?
Yes, sir, Mr. Dudley.
Yes, sir, thank you, Ms. Chairman. Kim, can you provide us like a list of dates of all of these things that are coming, and what they, that way we can mark our count?
Do you want us to send it? It's on this big sheet right here.
Okay.
That's the big calendar.
Yes.
It's also in the packet, but it's pretty little, and as you can tell, you can't really see it on the screen.
Yes.
So that's why I printed it big, so you could have it. But we can certainly, I can have Kaylin put it on your calendars. Really, the main one is May 13th, which is that special meeting. Everything else should be a regular Board of Supervisors meeting.
All right, that way I can have it on my phone, and if we have questions into public, then I can answer them.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Mr. Bowman. Ms. Chairman, Ms. Vanderheide, thank you very much, and I appreciate the extension of working on the budget compared to last year, where we had to approve it in April, which put a lot of pressure, a lot of stress on the folks that had to put this together. So this, having it, you know, stretched out a little bit, closer to when it actually goes into effect, is great, so thank you.
So tonight, if we can get you all to make a motion, have it added to your night meeting just for approval, it probably would be appropriate just to put it on the consent agenda, it's just changing dates, but that's entirely up to you all. And so in the packet, I have put what that motion should read, and how that should read, so.
Hang on, Ms. Vanderheide, I'll ask for motion now to add it to consent agenda.
I'll make a motion, Ms. Chairman, to add this calendar to.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that motion would be need to be made during the business meeting.
Okay, thank you so much.
Moving on to our revenue projections, and if you want to follow along in the packet.
Ms. Vanderheide, I hate to interrupt you, Mr. Bowman had stated he would rather the Beautification Committee go before we do revenues and debt financing, is that's okay?
Sure.
Ms. Vanderheide, Madam Clerk, and to everyone here, just to kind of maintain protocol, when it's added to the agenda, it would be under six C, because we have to stay with the agenda, the agenda was actually amended. Hopefully, we won't be here too long, but we need to take care of the business, okay? Continue.
Not long.
Thank you.
So our projected year-end 2025 revenues, I have listed these according to the major tax categories, you all have seen this in the past. So real estate, we have a column called projected 2025 revenues. So what we've done is we've looked at revenues through the end of February, and we've projected out to the end of the year. So we're anticipating, and this does include your delinquent tax collections, as well as just regular tax collections. So that total is going to be $34,619.22. Our budget was $33,763,469. So we'll have additional revenues of $856,453. Personal property is, the projected revenue is 13.5. We budgeted 12.6 for an additional revenue of 936. Machinery and tools, we project 2.2 million, and we were right on, almost on the money, but with 2,180, so additional revenue of $38,000. I skipped mobile homes and barns. We're a little bit over there as well with 18,686. Those projected revenues are 318 compared with the budget of 299. Merchant's capital is 414, a budget of $394,000, so roughly $20,000 more. A big one to note is your public service corporations. This has in it River Street, that infrastructure is included in there, and we wouldn't have had that information during budget season last year. So our projected revenues are just shy of $3 million. We budgeted $2.1 million for additional revenues of 876. And then personal property is about $174,000, projected at 641,000, budget of 466. And then I've included solid waste household fees, but of course, that is in your enterprise fund. We are showing projected revenues of 3.3 million, and that's, it's a little shy of what we had originally budgeted for, by $26,445. So we do have some additional revenues that we can work with. I had talked to Finance, the little meeting that we had last week about possibly using some of this, these funds for one-time-only purchases that we need to do in the coming year, but we'll give you more information on that as we move along. Any questions on the anticipated 2025 year-end revenues? If we move on to the 2026 budgeted revenues, real estate, as you know, you all set that rate back in February, which has given us more time to work on the budget. So basically, your additional revenue is coming in with growth from the county, which was right around 1%. Usually, we hope for maybe 2%, but it looks like that growth is hovering around 1%. So our proposed revenue for 2026 is 34 million. This does include the delinquent collection amounts that we think we're going to collect next year, and our 2025 budget was 33.7, so we should get additional revenues of 433. Personal property is 12.9, last year it's 12.6, for a difference of 368. We are able to keep our personal property tax relief percentages at the same rate as it was last year. If you'll remember, when you passed your rates, I left that figure blank, because you have to wait to see what your values are. But it looks like we'll be okay to keep that percentage at the same amount. So our mobile homes and barns are pretty much the same as last year. M&amp;T, we're at $2.3 million, and we budgeted 2.2 last year. We did do some checking, M&amp;T is still being worked on, so we don't have really good solid figures on that. But we did check to make sure that Morgan Olson is still included in that, and they did turn in a form this year, and it's about what it was last year, maybe a little bit more than last year. Merchant's capital is a little less than last year, by $34,000 roughly. And then your public service corporations, you'll see a big balloon there. We ended up putting in an estimate for MVP pipeline monies. We do not have an actual estimate from the SEC, but we were able to get some figures from MVP themselves as far as value, and that's where our estimate has come from. And so we're estimating tax from that to be about $1.8 million. So that's where we get this figure of 3.5 compared to 2.1 last year, for a difference of 2.4 million. And then our personal property is about $168,000 more than last year, we're at 634 for our projected 2026. And then our solid waste household fee has gone up a little bit to 3.4 million, we budgeted 3.3 last year. Any questions on that? So our revenues really, we look like we're in really good shape as far as where we're ending the year, and what I think we're projecting for next year. So it's pretty close to, you know, what we kind of thought last year. I want to say kudos to the Treasurer's Office for their delinquent collections, that has been amazing. So delinquent collections, both for personal property and for real estate, is just blown our estimate out of the water. And that is very volatile, very hard to estimate from year to year. So that is exceptional for his team over there to be doing that work. Also, interest, which, you know, we have no control over, but we collected a lot of interest this year. So that is also a pretty large number compared to what we thought we were going to get. But of course, those interest rates now are kind of trending down, so, you know, next year, it may look a little bit different on the things that we cannot control. So. Any other questions?
Questions?
The next slide, which really looks not good on this screen, anyway. So one of the things that I thought would be interesting would be for us to compare our real estate rates with other localities. And so I've done this for you in the next slide, to show you what the tax rates are for surrounding localities, and also what the per capita tax burden is for those localities. I have used 2024 data, which just came out recently with the Auditor of Public Accounts. I also laid on your desk this beautiful presentation, you all would have gotten this back in January, and I'm not going to take credit for it, but Chuck and Jere put this together. And look, I made a copy of it. It's great information, great information. It tells us where we rank among all the localities in the whole state of Virginia, and I think it would benefit you all from looking at that. But I'm just, for the sake of this presentation, just giving you some high-level overview based on our new tax rate, and how that lines up with everybody else. So if you look at us, we're the last column on that graph. Our tax rate is currently at 56 cents. And our per capita, that's how much each person's burden is in the county based on our population, is $522. That compared to Henry County, Henry County's tax rate is a little less than ours at 55.5. Their per capita is $334 per person. Halifax is at 50 cent, and their tax burden is 455. But you can see Franklin County has a much cheaper tax rate at 43 cent, but their tax burden is higher, $829. Well, Franklin County is, surrounds the lake, they have a lot of properties that are valued higher than ours. City of Danville is at 84 cent, their per capita is 467. Campbell County is at 45, their per capita is 513. And Bedford is at 41 cent, but their per capita is 637. So it's based on kind of two factors, how many people live in your community, and also how much the value of your property is. So, you know, don't always look at that tax rate, because it can be deceptive. So the next slide, I was tasked with perhaps looking at, we had talked about last year during budget season, how much of a tax burden it was on citizens to wait six years, not raise tax, and then give a large tax increase. So the question was, what would it look like, and how could we provide the same level of service if we just increased one penny per year? So I was tasked at doing five years, I only did three, and three's pushing it, because guess what's happening? We start reassessment next year, and it's going to blow it all out of the water again. So I did three years just for the sake of this exercise, but just know, in 2029, you're going to have new assessment figures, your rates going to completely change, and that kind of thing. So if you look at that, I considered a 1% growth for the county each year, and a 1-cent tax increase. So in 2027, we've already fixed it for '26. In 2027, if we went to 58 cents, based on a 1% growth on the value that I've calculated so far, and then we put the new tax rate on it, we could possibly glean another $936,320 from that. If we had no tax increase, we would only get about 333. So that's an additional amount for that.
Excuse me, can you repeat that figure if we did nothing?
If we did nothing, it's 333. If we do 1 cent, it's 900. So you would have additional revenues to work with of 602,000. I also did that for the real estate with public service corporations, and of course, that's not a lot of money, but I want to show that, too. It takes a lot of money, assessment-wise, to make a lot of money. So if we raised that penny, it would be 234,890, and then with no increase, it would only be 173,000. So that additional earned penny would give us $61,000 more. So we could have about $663,000 just for real estate if we were to do that. And then it just compounds on itself. So I'm not going to go through every single figure, but basically, 2027, we would have $600,000 to work with. And 2028, when it moved to 58 cents, you would go to $1.3 million. And then by 2029, when you went to 59 cents, it would give you $2 million. So as you put a penny on, you're still going to get this penny, and then you're going to add to the next penny. So this is just an exercise, we just wanted to go through just to show you, but then we want to compare that figure to, well, this is how I projected it as far as your per capita, we'll go through that. You see, it doesn't change your per capita very much, I mean, just, and it goes incrementally, instead of jumping from 522 to 609 all of a sudden. So it makes it a little bit easier to digest if you're doing it a little bit at the time. The next slide shows you.
One quick comment there, Ms. Vanderheide, because I want the public to understand, you know, what we task you with and the purpose here. We would probably need to look at increasing that penny incrementally, just to keep pace with inflation. Now, that is just to provide the same level of service that we provided last year. So that's why we started out this process with a budget shortfall. I mean, we had a delta of, what, about $2 million?
The delta was, well, in request, was about $9 million, but we carved it down to, we're about, we're out about $2 to $3 million.
Going in, yeah.
Going in, yeah. So that's the work we're getting ready to really get started on in the coming weeks. The next slide is just general inflation. So I went back five years. Now, lots happened in five years, we hope this will slow down, but on average, the increase in inflation has been 6%. And you know, we've been through some really, really tough times. So if you just look at general fund anticipated increase for '27, you know, we're going to get $600,000 if we add that penny, but then you've got $5.5 million of an increase, that's the increase, the increase. Now, a big thing is our transfer to schools and DSS. What we have done for schools over the last five years has also been 6%. And if you'll remember, we were doing, trying to do, the minimum plus 6%. But now what's happening is the minimum is moving.
That's right.
So that's a moving target. So to, I'm just going by what we've done, but that doesn't mean it's going to stay that way, just because of, you know, it's dependent on so many factors. So I backed that figure off just to show you what general operations would be for the county. So even with that taken off, you're looking at 3.9. And you see how that incrementally increases year over year. So, you know, to say you're going to raise the penny and think that that's going to cover it, it's really not. We have to hope for other things coming to our area to help offset that, other forms of revenue. So we really want to get it off the taxpayers' backs. We don't want that to continue to be a burden for them. So you only have two things, somebody else paying it or us paying it, and you definitely want somebody else to do that. Any questions on that?
Questions? Mr. Bowman?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Ms. Vanderheide, that's very good. One of the things that came up during your presentation, which a lot of people, if they don't know the backstory, is the landfill. And that's a decrement. And that's a decrement that was listed, probably the only one you had listed up there. We're dependent on contracts to keep that going and make sure that enterprise fund stays solvent, if you will. If something goes wrong there, then we also have to have funds in there in order to keep that moving forward, whether it's, you know, the landfill itself, expansion, equipment, personnel, whatever. So it's a big expense for this county, and so we need to stay aware of that and, and make sure that we are covered in that landfill operation. So thank you for that and bringing that to our attention.
Any other discussion? Questions, comments? Very quickly, just to address Mr. Bowman's point with the enterprise fund and landfill, you know, the equipment is getting more and more expensive. You have maintenance costs that's continuing to go up. And that coupled with the fact that we've not really visited our, our tipping fees, in fact, what we're charging, you know, at contract rates, that sort of thing. Of course, we don't want to scare business off, but we need to take a look and, and see if we can renegotiate some of those contracts to find a happy medium there to try to, to use your word, glean a little bit more revenue there. Okay. Any other comments? Thank you.
And we're going to move on to finance, and that's the next item, I think, on our list, and the last item, actually, that I have to discuss this afternoon. We do need to finance some items that we've talked about at length at our budget forum. And really, over the last couple of years, we've known that this day was coming. And so I've provided you with this, these are documents that you've seen before, but just to put it before you again, are the capital items that will require financing. And that is a new CAD system replacement. It has not been replaced in over 20 years. That cost is $1,351,731. They would start that project July 1, 2025. The radio system upgrade, this is on our radio towers so that our equipment can speak to each other, is $1.9 million, and that would also begin at the same time, July 1. Our courthouse HVAC also needs replacing, but right now, we're not certain on when that would take place, what the total true cost would be. We do have to take a deep dive, but that is definitely an immediate need for sure. And then we've got property acquisition and renovation on there, too, and that's also uncertain, but we do need space in this county. So that's kind of sitting out there as a placeholder. And then our broadband final payment, which we've always known that we needed to make since River Street started their project, is at $4,159,300. And we will also need that before the end of this year because that project will be complete in December. So we have to have that last tranche of money. That is the last piece of what will pay that project off. So our total cost of projects that will require financing is $11.5 million. And I gave you all two options. The first option, which I am not recommending, but it will do the same thing as option two, and that's to fund everything that you had on the front page. We would use money from our project fund that has been set aside because of freed-up debt payments. So our amount that would be financed in the summer of 2025 would be $9.5 million. The reason I don't like this option is there's uncertainty on two of those items, and that's your courthouse HVAC and your property acquisition. When you go to the market, you have to have a project budget and a timeline, and I don't have either of those for those items. So that's why I'm recommending option number two. And option number two includes some items that you all have previously approved, but we also passed a reimbursement resolution that would allow us to pay ourselves back from when we did finance, and that is for the Moses Building window replacement and HVAC system replacement, and that is $1.5 million. And that started in July of 2024, and you all passed a resolution in February of 2024 that said that we could pay ourselves back if we financed that project. Same with the Paths Building. It would fall under that same reimbursement resolution. And the purchase of that building and the renovations totaled $725,788. The purchase was made at the end of October 2024. And then you would still finance your CAD system at 1.3, your radio system at 1.9, and your broadband final payment of $9.6 million. So it's a little bit more than financing the other way, only by less than $100,000, which could be any kind of change order that you might have on the projects. But then your cash contributions available for capital expenses, we would then have the $2 million we talked about from the first page, plus you would be reimbursing yourselves with cash of $2,267,781. So then we would have cash that we could pay for the items that we're not certain about right now, property acquisition along with that courthouse HVAC. So that would give us about $4 million for those two items. Any questions? It's a lot to digest, I know. So moving on, what we would need for you all to do tonight is for you all to add this to your agenda, for, to approve for staff to make an application for the, to the Virginia Resources Authority to obtain financing. That application process, the application is due May 1st. So that would give us a little over a month to work on that application, as well as the backup documentation to go with it. I've actually completed the bare bones of the application, which is about 10 pages long, but everything, every item that is a question requests an attachment. So it's the attachment that takes a little bit of time. You need engineering reports, budget timelines, you need audits for five years, financial statements for five years. So, you know, it's a big deal. It's like buying a house. It's financing anything. So I've put that motion in your packet, so that item would also need to be added, and that's just for us to move along in the process, application process.
Any questions? Questions?
And just so you know, some people might be concerned with where is the money for the debt payment? You already have that baked in your budget. So this is not going to require additional funds to be added to your budget. They're already there.
Got you.
So, next steps for us. We'll be working with Finance Committee to bring the budget into balance. Hopefully, that will be a painless process and one that will be something we can live with for the next year. And then Mr. Shortle will be completing his recommended budget and submitting it to you all on April 11th, and the presentation will be made on April 15th. And you all would approve for that budget, including the school budget, to be advertised for public hearing. And then the public hearing would be May 13th, and we would approve that budget on May 20th. Sounds easy, doesn't it? Any questions? And that's all I have.
Any questions for Ms. Vanderheide? Let me just say, first off, let me express my gratitude to Ms. Vanderheide. She's on top of it, her team, they work very, very hard to, to keep us solvent and, you know, part of our responsibility financially as a county is we have to be physically conservative. And she does just that. I tease her sometimes. It's kind of like going to Hardee's, and everyone enjoys that biscuit they get from Hardee's, but Ms. Vanderheide is actually behind the scenes making the sausage. So we thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We move to item 6C, the Beautification Committee. Apologize, I can't call your name.
Good afternoon, members of the Budget Committee and Board of Supervisor members. My name is Phyllis Barker, and I am the Dan River Representative of the Beautification Committee. We are coming up on a year that this committee has been in existence for a year, and we have been proactive in establishing ways to combat the unsightly appearance of our county. Projects include the education of our students by reading to classrooms about effects of littering, by organizing county-wide cleanups, seeking grants for trail cameras to catch those littering, and posting billboards about the fines for those who are caught littering. I am here with other members of the committee, and we respectfully request the consideration for the following. That $100,000 be included in the 2025-2026 budget with a recommendation that will be a new line item embarked for trash abatement. That the county hire two full-time workers to be solely responsible for trash pickup throughout the county on a daily basis. We recommend a salary for each employee be in the range of $25,000, $30,000 plus benefits. That the salaries and benefits, I'm sorry, after the salaries and benefits, the remaining funds to be used for the purchase of a pickup truck, plus any other equipment needed to manage the cleanup of county roadways. The two employees would work in tandem, patrolling and policing up the trash in the county. This committee will defer the county administrator as to the proper department to place and supervise these employees. We thank Supervisor Bowman, the Board of Supervisor liaison to this committee, who has attended our monthly meetings and for his guidance. He is fully aware of our dedication and our intentions to tackle the litter problem aggressively. I would like to note that the Danville City Council recently addressed their litter problem that in the meeting of council, they praised Pennsylvania County for the efforts of the Beautification Committee. And we really understand and realize that this is a presentation to you, and there'll be no dialogue or comments to be made, but we'd like to point out that we do have two additional citizens here tonight that are in support of this request, and we thank you for your, your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Beautification Committee. All right. Any matters from the Finance Committee, Mr. Height? Mr. Bowman?
Ms. Chairman, I'd like to echo your comments to Ms. Vanderheide and her staff. Garrett, great job in putting together the budget so far. Everything looks good, and, and I like seeing a positive and not a negative on there. So we've done quite a bit of, of work on reducing the cost and the expenses, and we still have some more to go, some more meetings to go, and I think we're going to get there. So thank you for all your hard work. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Dudley? You good?
I'm good. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. We stand adjourned.